I'd like to welcome everyone to the Abington School Committee Meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, September 1st, and it is 6:30. At this time, I'd like everybody to stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I ask everybody to stay standing for a moment of silence for those troops that we lost overseas? Thank you. Before we begin tonight, I just have a brief statement. I love seeing the show of support from parents, community members, and students at our last meeting. The Hearing of Visitors portion is on our agenda monthly so that parents and students can speak freely to bring up concerns or give feedback. However, I ask that anyone speaking during the Hearing of Visitors section to refrain from asking questions directly to an individual member of the committee. If you have a question for a member, please use their Abington School email address to contact that member and feel free to add myself or Peter to the message. I ask that any visitor speaking tonight or in the future to please be courteous to the board members. Please do not speak out of turn or yell from your seats. We will not tolerate bullying or harassment of individual members at our meetings. Some boards do not offer a Hearing of Visitors section, and sometimes, depending on their agenda and the fact that maybe they don't want to hear from some visitors, don't add it to their agenda at all. I believe in our First Amendment right to free speech and the right to speak up and speak against any issue you feel relevant, but I do ask that we be respectful to the room while doing so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Would anyone like to speak at this point? We do have a Hearing of Visitors section that is open. Okay, seeing no visitors, we'll move on to the reading and approval of records. Would someone like to make a motion after they've read through the June 22, 2021 minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, we have the reading and approval of records for the May 25, 2021 minutes. These are the executive session minutes.
I'll make a motion, Wendy.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the reading and approval of the April 26 minutes, and that is also an executive session.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have the reading and approval of the March 11, 2021 minutes, and this is also an executive session.
This feels like forever ago.
I'll make the motion, Wendy.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the reading and approval of the February 23 minutes, which is also executive session. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the January 26 minutes. Would anyone like to make a motion for this executive session of minutes?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
I'll second it.
Excuse me, thank you.
I'm in favor too, so.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up, we have New Business, which is the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Mask Mandate Implementation. Peter, was this in our packet? Could I didn't, I didn't see it in mine.
There, there is no enclosure in the packet based on the conversation at the subcommittee level we had the other day. And if you want me to explain the handbook language we have after you, you know, whatever you want me to do, answer any questions.
Okay. I, I wish I had a copy just to show, to like kind of look at for everybody.
Of what we have in place?
Yeah, just, well, yeah, is that all right?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. So, Desi sent out a, a new policy.
So, we were reviewing a policy that Hanover and Norwell were using.
Yep.
That what, that's what we met as a subcommittee on?
Mm-hmm.
And then I have the existing hand language, the handbook language with me that the subcommittee agreed would cover us rather than voting a new policy.
Great, thank you.
Do you want the existing handbook?
Essentially, what Wendy and I did when we met, we, we looked through a mock policy from another district and in looking at it, and then looking at our existing handbooks for the different schools, we kind of just came to the conclusion that it covered everything that would possibly come from not wearing a mask. It's more like not following any kind of rule at this point, so it, and it just kind of leaves discretion open to the administrators of the building for each one of the schools to handle as they see fit if a situation were to arise. So, we felt it wasn't necessary to add another policy to our policy, you know, that the existing handbook and the policies regarding, I don't know, the exact wording of just, I mean, layman terms, not following directions, it was already covered for each school.
And it's, it's, the, it would follow, you know, a warning, a conversation, it's not just, you know, you are removed from the building, there's a, there's a step by step that would be administered the way all things are administered with regard to discipline.
Right. And seeing that there's already a discipline policy in each handbook, as Chris stated, already for each school, that it falls in line with following that policy for each school. So, we recommend to the committee that we don't have a vote, we just follow, excuse me, what we already have in place.
Okay, so just to be clear, so there's no new language being put in? It's basically, here are the rules, follow them, and as per anything else we have in our handbook?
So, it's, I'll summarize all of the different handbooks. They basically say, students are required to be compliant with a reasonable request of a staff member. So, it covers, all, all handbooks have something like that in it because you can never have a handbook that's inclusive of everything that everybody could possibly do on any given day. So, and, and there are other districts, a lot, you know, I don't, I don't have a number for you, but there are other districts in Massachusetts that are using existing handbook language rather than recreating the wheel and doing something differently.
Just for the public, could you just restate the, the kind of progression?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, you know, talking to students, warning, calling the parent, trying to get the parent to help. The student waits to go to class until, you know, we can get the, hopefully the parent to help us with it, and then could result in the student being in what you would think of as sort of an in-school susset, in-school suspension type setting because they can't go to class, and then we can provide activities and work for them, you know, lunch, breaks, and things like that, but still try to keep them connected to the learning.
And just to be clear, this all kind of happens at the same time. It's not like, okay, Monday you get a warning, Tuesday we're going to call your parents, Wednesday, like it's, this is.
All happens at the same time, absolutely.
Yeah.
And you know, it, it's like anything else. It's like, you can imagine the things that go on in schools. I mean, you know what goes on in schools, like from, you know, somebody's vaping, or there's bullying, or there's, all of these things are dealt with in a, in a progressive way, and it depends on, you know, how disruptive it is, how quickly it moves through the process.
Excellent. Does anyone have any other questions?
So, there's no motion that's required.
Right. Thank you. So, we will move on to Section B of New Business. So, in your packet, you actually have a revised version that was sent out to everybody yesterday, which is a letter that I'd like the school committee here in Abington to send to Desi and Baker. And so, I'm in a, I'm in a group with 13 other districts, and we're all school committee members, usually chairs, and we kind of pass around information and some ideas. And Hanover actually came up with the first version, which was in our, in our agenda packet, but we took a few things out because it didn't pertain to us, and also their BOH is on board with what that town does, or that school district does. So, we took out the information, like just the sentence that spoke about our BOH. So, you guys should have a revised copy, and I'm hoping we can send this out just so that basically parents know we're still advocating for them and that we still stand behind the letter. It's the reason why that we changed things around is because Desi mandated, not a law, but sent in a mandate that we have to follow them. So, that's why we're doing it, just so that we can make, ensure to our parents that what we said before still stands, and that if there is a reason to change anything, if they come up with any reason or expectations that Abington and Hanover and the other districts might be able to just show them that, you know, the, I think that Desi, they said that they heard from a lot of districts about already masking, or there were issues between the BOH and their Abington, I mean, excuse me, and their school committee. So, that's the reason why, when I talked to Desi today, that they instituted this new mandate, because they wanted to take it out of the hands of so many districts where that were having trouble. And I think that Desi needs to know that, you know, we're a smaller suburban district, and so we're not like, you know, Boston and Springfield and Worcester. So, I don't know, I just wanted to do what the rest of the school committees, I believe, are intending to do in other districts. So, I was hoping I might be able to get a vote on that. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions, I guess more comments than anything. So, I guess just to, so everybody's kind of aware at what is, so this is, this is, what this is not, is it's not tell, it's, it's not telling anybody that this school committee would vote any way at all on anything. It's asking the state to give the pro, the power to make that decision back to the school committee and not have it be a state mandate. I'll be perfectly honest with you, I've been on this committee four and a half years. Thinking about this for the last two days was one that I'm still to this second unsure of, so if there's a motion, I'll make a decision at that time probably. Eight days ago, I would have been 100% behind this letter. Some things that have happened in the community over the last seven or eight days has led me to waver a little bit because now I understand why the state implemented this. The state implemented this so that they would take the heat and that decisions like this wouldn't come down with anger on a school committee, where if it could be discussed civilly, I wouldn't have as much issue with this right now. That's why I'm questioning it, because I don't know if people really want the school committee to have the power to make a decision. I think they want the school committee to have the power to make their decision. And that's why I'm hesitating right now. I know that if I were to vote for this, it would not mean that I personally would make any choice right now, it just means that it would come back to us, and if it gets voted in regardless of my vote, that it would just mean it would come back to us, and at that time, I'd make a decision if it needed to be made. So, I just wanted to more let people know what it was, why I feel the way I feel, and where I sit right now on it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I truly hope that by October 1st, we'll be able to let parents make decisions for their children that will be in that place. However, I think I'd like to hold off on deciding whether to send this letter until our September 28th meeting. I know it is close to the October 1st date, but it was placed in our packets just a few days ago, and I, I think I need a little more time with the wording.
Got you.
Which will also give us time to see where the commissioner is regarding the mandate and what numbers look like after a few weeks of school being in session.
Makes sense. Thank you, Danielle.
Going on the heels of what Danielle has said, I too agree, just on the grounds that I didn't, there was no committee meeting to create or necessarily discuss the letter, and this is not an agreement or a disagreement with the letter itself. It's, there was no awareness of the letter until, actually, I received an email asking me about the letter. And I would just probably prefer to wait until the later September meeting, see where we are, and not to say a yes or a no right, you know, to a letter in and of itself, but at this time, until we have a chance as a committee to discuss it as a committee, I'd prefer to hold off on doing anything with it at this time.
Okay. I agree, and, you know, Heidi, I think it was you that mentioned the other day that, you know, we have, up until now, whether we all agreed with it or not, as a committee, we made the decision to go with Desi's guidelines, which before was not to have a mask mandate. And I'm not really clear why now, when we sort of made that decision, we would make the decision to not want to, you know, agree with and go, you know, why are we questioning Desi now when we didn't question them before, I guess is my concern. I think it's no secret, everybody knows I'm more in favor of the mask mandate than others on the committee, at least for the younger students, but that, you know, as a committee, that is my concern, is, you know, why are we now making the decision that, you know, Desi doesn't, isn't making the right decision?
Oh, sorry, Wendy, I didn't mean to.
Oh, that's all right.
And I was just going to say, I think for everybody's benefit though, to understand this is the meeting to, like, there can't be a discussion outside of this meeting regarding the letter. So, this is the, the, now, to hold off to make the decision, that's fine, but the discussion of it is what's occurring right now essentially, so that's all, I just wanted to make clear for everybody.
Thanks, Chris, I was going to say that as well. And then just want to say that it's just sending a message to Desi, it's not making them change their mind. I don't think they care about what we think anyway, but it's just sending a message to them, you know, to let them know that the smaller suburban districts, you know, feel like they can manage with their COVID numbers for their students on their own. But we could always put this aside and bring it up again on September 28th. Peter, how would we do that?
Abs, if, if that's what you tell me.
Just put it aside, or do we vote on it tonight, or put it aside for?
We'll bring it back on the 28th.
Bring it back on the 28th.
That's what you want.
Wendy, would you, would you feel comfortable? I mean, and it might have more, if in that time and space, it might have more impact if instead of sending a letter that we as the committee feel strongly about closer to a date as opposed to en masse with a whole bunch of other.
There could be more information that comes out too between now and then. I think in making, voting on it now, what it does is it makes an answer now, and you can't revisit it at that point.
Right.
So, it might make the most sense to revisit it.
I totally, I totally understand where everybody's coming from, and I appreciate everyone's feedback, and I'm definitely willing to put it into our next meeting.
If that works for me.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. So, we just put this aside, and then that will be on the agenda for the next time.
Bring it up.
Perfect. Okay, so, page. Next up, we have the report of the Director of Student Services for the 2020, 21 Extended School Year wrap-up. Mr. James Robbins, Dr. Robbins actually, right? Excuse me.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me. So, I'm just here to give a brief summary of the activities that took place, the instructional activities that took place during our summer. So, it ran for the four weeks of July. There was a program for students with disabilities referred to as our Extended School Year Program.
Dr. Robbins, I'm sorry, I can't really hear you, can you speak up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, totally. All right. So, there were three separate programs that ran over the summer. One for students with disabilities referred to as our Extended School Year Program, a new program for English learners, and a credit recruitment program for students at the secondary level. I'll give a quick summary of each, one by one. So, our Extended School Year Program is, is designed for students with disabilities. The idea is that students are found eligible by IEP teams when they show a vulnerability to learning regression during the summer months. So, the idea is that there are some students who, by virtue of their disability, are going to lose the skills and knowledge that they had gained during the previous school year, and when they return in August and September, a disproportionate amount of their time would be spent on reviewing the skills. So, we provide continuity of learning during the month of July so that they can retain the skills and be better prepared for new learning when they return in, in August and September. So, the students we had were in grades pre-K through 8. The students are, participate in, in small group instruction. The, the content emphasizes math and ELA skills, and social skills are, are integrated into that program. Also, knowing that students with disabilities are, are, are at a heightened risk for emotional impact due to the COVID closure, we also made available a, a mental health counselor over the summer, and students were identified by, by building administrators and, and school psychologists for needing that support over the summer, and parents were informed and given the opportunity to opt out. So, a number of students also participated in small, small social skills groups and mental health counseling over the summer. Students tended to work on individualized goals, but as I've mentioned, the emphasis was on math and ELA skills. So, that is the special education program that ran over the summer. Additionally, we had a program for English learners, and the idea too is that by virtue of just being a vulnerable population, that they, they too were, were at a heightened risk of learning loss because of the COVID closure. So, the English, the English Language Education Department identified students grades K through 8 to participate in the, in the summer programming. So, they would participate in small groups for two-week periods during our four-week summer program. And lastly, we had a secondary program that we, that we run every year, and the idea of this program is just, there are a number of students who, who struggled during the year, and at the secondary level, they, they may have failed to earn credits, so they're given this four-week opportunity to, to participate in, in instruction and recoup their credits. So, at the middle school, we had 23 students who participated in two classes. There were an integrated math and science class and an integrated ELA and history class. And at the high school, we had 40 students who similarly participated in integrated classes. One class was called Making Sense of Problems in Math, and the other was Understanding Perspectives and Culture Through Literacy. Also, for all the participating students, we offered free breakfast and lunch. So, that was just a quick summary of the summer programming that we offered. Any questions?
I just, I'm sorry, I just have one question. So, I know that this was sort of in a response to, you know, COVID. Is it a program that you think would be beneficial to continue even in a more normal school year?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, the Extended School Year is something that we're, that we're mandated to offer legally, so it's, it's something that we would offer, but we tried to enhance that experience by offering the mental health counseling. And what we typically don't offer is a program for English learners over the summer, but I would say that the students who did participate had a very positive experience, so, so I think it is something we will consider offering in future summers. And the, the, the secondary program I described, which the big idea really is credit recruitment, so for those kids who had, who had failed but were close to passing, get a second, get a second shot at it. So, that is something we typically offer, but thanks to the leadership of Principal Bourne and Principal McCurton, the classes were reconceptualized to be a bit more integrated this year, and there were also some other experiences, some other offerings to just make it a nicer time for kids. I, like, as I mentioned, there was free breakfast and lunch, there was opportunities for wellness and movement breaks, and so I think, so I think a lot of those elements should be carried on into the year ahead. All, all the students who participated seemed to have a nice time, so I think we learned from the experience and, and offered a better product to students. Felicia?
I can, I can add that we anticipate being able to use some federal funding to support this type of summer program in the next few summers, and then we'll have to reevaluate the cost and the benefit and decide if that's something that we want to add into our operating budget.
And Dr. Robbins, I just want to say, as a parent who's had a child in it for, I think, nine years now, back to when it was five weeks and not four, and three hours a day instead of four, I can't say enough about what it's been able to do to just continue, as you said, continue the education they have during the year and then help that break that gap, it's not as large as it normally would be. So, thank you.
Two questions. Number one, do we know roughly what the percentage of students who were offered the ESY experience who did in fact take advantage of it?
Yes. So, I, I don't have that, I don't have that freshly calculated, but I can ballpark if that would help. I, I would es, I would estimate it was probably like 88 to 94%, you know, it was a really good turnout.
And I love the addition of the ELL program, I'd love to see that happen. I know this is not student-related, but parent-related, which can help students. Do we know if there are going to be offerings within the district this year for adults who are also looking for ELL or for English language classes? I know that there have been some in the community in the past. Do we have any idea if those are going to be happening and if we have a way to promote them to families?
Yeah, yep. So, I know it is, in consultation with our ELE director, Elizabeth DePry, I know it is our plan to be able to offer that again. Last year, that was facilitated by a grant from Abington's Cultural Council.
Yeah.
And I know there is a plan to, to seek grant funding to be able to offer that again.
Awesome.
So, so we are anticipating that that will be on offer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robbins.
I just had a quick question. Will you remind me, this spring, did we offer students facing credit loss the chance, the remediation to start recouping some of the assignments that they were missing so that they wouldn't have to do summer school?
Yeah, and if I could just turn to Jonathan Bourne to better answer that question.
And the one right there on the floor is on, if you want to save yourself some steps.
Actually, Mr. McCurton at the middle school, I know didn't, I'm going to let him speak to that. We did not have a specific targeted spring intervention program, but I know Matt did at the middle school.
Okay. And, and I don't, I don't really, if you'd like to share, I just wanted to say I wasn't able to attend the June meeting, but I did want to say that I thought that was fabulous, and I think that it was great for us to offer the students that chance, because while we do have the summer school, and I love that we have that percentage of kids doing that, I think sometimes the thought of doing more school in the summer is something that turns some students off, so I just wanted to, to thank whoever was doing that. I know it was a difficult year and that it was unique circumstances, but I just wanted to make sure that I brought that up and thanked you guys for thinking of the students and offering them something else in addition to summer school, at least for last year.
But just so people know, there was also a music program, there was an athletics program, and I believe that there was a, you were probably going to say all this. All right, I'm going to stop talking.
I was going to speak more specifically to the program that we ran at the middle school level. We noticed throughout the year, as did schools across Massachusetts and the country, that we had more students struggling with online learning and maintaining the grade point averages they might maintain otherwise. So, entering the third trimester towards the end of the second trimester, we were looking at close to 80 or 85 students who would be eligible for summer school. So, we did offer three days a week of after-school. We called it tutoring, but it was also more of a mentoring experience for students. We had staff members paired up with anywhere between 8 to 12 students, and they worked with them on setting priorities, on getting assignments done, on backtracking and being able to complete some assignments, and our staff members were wonderful about opening for that. And in the end, that 80 was cut down to less than 30 invited students, so it was very successful.
Yeah, I just think that was awesome.
So, and, and where I was going with it is there was also a component with health and wellness and physical activity at the, in the summer program, so that it's, you know, it wasn't the summer school that I would have had to have gone to back in the day. It's, it probably wasn't as fun as going to the beach, but it was, it was better than, you know, what you think of when you think of summer school. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody who's involved in getting our kids through and helping them up.
Well, in addition, thank you to the music department and the athletics department. I, what they offered the students this summer was also outstanding, and spending a good week of, what was it, 112 kids at Woodstale with Camp Invention 2, there was some great opportunity provided for students this summer, and we all had a really good time.
All right, and just the second item on the agenda is that a number of parent tests. And just the second item on the agenda is that a number of parents have submitted requests for home education programs. In other words, homeschool. So I've reviewed all those requests and it's in your packet. And all of the proposed programs within would meet state requirements of being a credible homeschool program. So I, so I turn it to you as the committee to, to decide if you think it's, if the program should be approved.
Thank you. So the names listed on this paper are confidential. So please do not share them with anyone. And at this time, we are looking for a motion to approve the recommended home education programs for the 2021, 2022 school year, as recommended by Dr. Robbins. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Could I, if it's okay, just ask James to wait for a minute to just recognize someone publicly. And I know James wants to make sure we do this also. Our chair of our CPAC, who's been working with us is stepping down this year. We appreciate the work that she's done, Jane Coyle. And we just want to publicly express that appreciation for her involvement. I know that James shares that feeling with us. We talked about it this morning, so that's why he's standing there with me.
Yeah. And I just want to say too, when I first got on school committee years ago, there was, there wasn't a CPAC. I know Dipna tried often to get people to come out and between Dr. Robbins and, you know, Jane Coyle and the rest of the members, I think it's really flourished. So I think it's a great, you know, great to have and it's a good system for parents with special needs children to be able to go to and talk to people.
I agree.
They've also done an outstanding job at offering programs for parents of all students.
Very true.
And we definitely encourage all families to reach out, find out more about what CPAC is about because they do an outstanding job.
Thank you, Heidi.
Our thanks to Jane, she did a fantastic job leading over, over the past four years. She will be missed. And then just for anyone listening or watching, we do have a CPAC meeting arranged on September 22nd where we'll be doing, we'll be reorganizing. So we encourage people to, to attend. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we have that report of the superintendent of schools, back to school report.
So I'm going to try to do this, I'm going to mention some departments and some people and some things that all came together at, at one time and way to talk about what happened today. Because making today happen requires these different groups of people to work together and coordinate an effort for our kids. And so, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to recognize and thank these people in a moment. But, you know, I want to tell you, going around the buildings today as, as kids, you know, went into the building and they left the building at all the different schools, you know, I had, I had quick conversations, I had more lengthy conversations with both our, with both our kids and their parents. And I mean, I, I'm thinking of a couple of different, two different conversations I had with kids who weren't in school. This was their first day since March, not last March, but the March before that. We had 12% of our population-ish just, you know, hasn't been, hasn't come to school in over like a year and a half. And the look in their eye about coming to school, like the body language, they were excited. And that, that spoke more to me today in my memory of today than, than all of the other conversations I had. And I, I don't know, I just got lucky. I saw the same family leaving one of the buildings today and I said, how was it? And, you know, you know, you're going to come back tomorrow. And they're like, yeah, I'm going to be. They were excited. And so, you know, as I asked our kids, as they came out of the buildings, you know, how was today? I got, I actually got some greats. The majority were goods. You know, that's what kids, oh, good, good, good. And I got a lot of okays. I got a couple of eh. And that's what kids do. And, but it was awesome to have everybody back. And, you know, we're able to have more flexible groups and, and run classrooms a little closer, you know, to the way that they should be run, that are more fun and more engaging for kids this year. And so it was good. But, you know, let me just give you an example of all the things that came together and just express my appreciation for all these different groups or people that helped us pull this off. Because we all know this has been tough. You know, and it's been tougher on some than others, but it's, but no matter what, it's been tough on everybody. I want to thank Jason Lynn and our maintenance department. There were summer projects that occurred and I'm not, Felicia's going to talk about those. Bernie Darcy and our food service program, you know, the number of families and kids that have been fed over the summer and then as we, in the opening and the work that they have to do, you know, with, you know, it's just, it's so, so much heavier during COVID. Rich Baikowski and the crew in the tech office. I mean, we hit the sweet spot, if there is such a thing in a pandemic, that we built a school and all of our kids had computers. And it was Rich and the crew that made that happen. And, you know, they came back to school and, I mean, hundreds and hundreds, Rich is going to be mad at me for not knowing how many of computers were refurbished and redistributed and they just, they just miraculously made that happen. The administrative assistants at each building, again, the level of detail that goes into all of the things, kids don't just, you know, when the bell rings and somebody, and everybody has a room to go into, that doesn't just happen. There's a lot of work behind the scenes. Colleen, Gail, Mary Ann and Deb, who helped with our buses. The buses are going to be slow. There's construction in town. Tomorrow's going to be a miserable morning with the rain. It's going to be slow. And then, you know, people take pictures at every stop, which is good. Our kids are getting out of cars before they get in the bus because it's raining. And that just, if, if the bus is making, you know, 40 stops, that adds 30 seconds to every stop, the bus gets later and later and later. And so we just, I want to make sure people know that the kids are safe, we're going to get them home, but the buses are going to run slowly for the first couple of weeks. The custodians and the building crews, I mean, our buildings look sharp and you walk in and I'm proud of them. And I just want to just, you know, it doesn't just happen. It's the first impression that people get when they walk in our buildings. Do these people care about the work that they do? And I mean, if you walk into a store and it looks like hell, you just, you know, you don't want to be in that store. And I'm proud of what our crews did to get us ready, especially with the summer programs that we had going on. People don't realize the crunch that that causes because they can't get to things. Our building administrators, I mean, they sweat every single detail and I worry about them because they, they, you know, it's stressful and they're, they're working hard and they, they helped us, they helped lead us at each building to a good opening. And it's because they care about kids. Central office staff, I mean, the, the people that call us with really thoughtful questions who are nervous about the opening or, you know, school and just, we've got people that just answer those phones and take care of people. They drop everything to make sure that they can help the stress level of families. I want to recognize our nurses this year more than any other year. You know, all these things that we talk about up here about what we're doing about this pandemic. Well, you know, I didn't invent those things and they come, they come from on high and it's our nurses that help digest all of this stuff. And then it just keeps coming and it changes every month. I want to thank Marty Golightly and his staff. We check everything we do through them and, and they have been, you know, every week I've been, I talk to them probably three, four times a week, if not, you know, sometimes it's a couple of times a day. The, the building department, the fire department, the DPW and our water department, the police department, the, the library. They supported our students over the summer with summer reading especially. And then they're always there to, to provide support for our kids and help them. Our school bus drivers and our van drivers. I mean, I want you to imagine driving 60 kids around town. I mean, it's, I can't drive my, you know, when my kids were little, I couldn't drive them around town without having problems. I can't imagine having 60 kids in a bus and getting them back and forth safely. I want to thank our school committee members. You know, this is a highly paid, glory filled job up here. And they care and, you know, we kind of argue like a family sometimes because, you know, when you care, you have the argument. But, but they care. And I couldn't ask for a better group of people to work with. Our families, I'm, you know, I love working in Abington because of the families that I work with. This is a special town and I know it because I've worked in other places, I live in another place. And if somebody from Pembroke is watching, I, I said it, I mean it. I spend my time here and I love this town. And you have good families that send us good kids. So all of these people supported our classrooms today, which is where the most important thing happens for our kids. And that happened today. And that's our teachers, our paraprofessionals and our tutors. I have to thank them more than anybody. All those other people I mentioned are only here to help them. Those, those, the kids were excited today because they got to be with their friends, okay? I know that. But they got to be with their teachers who created things for them that they loved and, and things that were meaningful to move them along at the same time in their education. If it wasn't for those people, those teachers, those paraprofessionals, those tutors, today wouldn't have been successful at all, not even close. But we have a great faculty and staff. We've always had, even in the tough times, even when we were poor with, you know, as a system, we were rich and we still are with, with, with the faculty and staff. So I got one more group to mention and I've got, I'm sorry if I forgot somebody. You have great kids. I mean, it just like, it's electric when they show up. I mean, I pulled up this morning to the high school and they were having breakfast and they're like, you know, they're all like excited and they're together and they're, they're just special kids. And so, you know, I just want to thank the kids because they're, they're the ones that like, all these people that I mentioned have this passion, all of us up here have this passion for these kids. And I don't know, I'll get off my soapbox, I've probably gone on too long, but it's the kids that get everybody out of bed in the morning to do this stuff because they were awesome today. You know, they all had masks on and nobody wants to wear them, but they did. And, and we were able to move them through the day in a, in a way that, you know, was more comfortable, I think, for everybody. So I'm just appreciative of that for everybody and I've probably said enough. That was my back to school report.
Thank you. I actually have a couple of questions. I don't, do mind if I go first, you guys?
No.
A few people reached out. Thank you, first of all. I just want to say thank you for everything that you said because it's absolutely true. So thank you to everybody for all you've done. But parents are really concerned about the drop off and pickup at the middle high school and what it looked like, especially since Glenowitz was condensed to one lane. It's really, I think, put an effect on how the flow is. So I know before we had talked about that, that wasn't a school decision, that was a town decision. So I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit?
So my memory is, is back when, when that construction, when that reconstruction, that repaving took place, you know, people started asking me questions. And, and the answer that I got from the town was that the town was recreating what that boulevard and Glenowitz was supposed to look like. Now, of course, they added a bike lane that wasn't there before. But that was, that's, that's the town, that's a town road. Those are both town roads, both, both Lincoln Boulevard and Glenowitz Way. And so we don't, we don't have an ability as a school department to, to make changes or strike that any differently. That all has to go through the, to the town of Abington.
Can we propose something to the town of Abington? I think that it might be a good idea because especially if you're considering a fire station over there and that's a big worry for some, you know, for everyone should be, coming in and out. And so I just, I don't know what to do, but if we can say something maybe to make them aware before they get to the other side of the street, or maybe they can widen that side, I'm not sure, but just so that they know that we're concerned about it and so aren't parents. And I just want to thank the staff and Felicia today for being out at the high school. That was great, everybody waving everyone along, which definitely worked. But also I think might help is if where you were waving everyone around, like right at that corner, if somebody could be there to say, okay, start getting out. Because otherwise people aren't getting out, they're waiting till they get to the door. So, I mean, parents, it's okay, you can let your kids out like 10, 20 feet before, before the door. You still have to walk like a two miles home and, you know, uphill both ways. So you guys can, it's okay. So if that could happen, that would be awesome. Another thing was mask breaks. They seem to have occurred in the morning, but not in the afternoon because of the rain. So is there a more efficient way that we can provide mask breaks to some?
I don't know if, if you have a specific building or area that...
I just know the high school.
Okay. I want to talk about mask breaks, Jonathan, do you mind?
Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have scheduled, planned, required mask breaks as part of our schedule outside of lunch where every student gets to take a mask off. However, we have asked our teachers to be cognizant and see how their students are doing. We had all last year of experience with, with students in mask breaks and many times when we would take mask breaks, the students didn't want to take a mask break. That having been said, we have strongly encouraged taking your students outside for walks, learning conversations and using the outdoor spaces where naturally students have the opportunity to take their mask off. So just with our change in schedule, where last year we had 85 minute periods, which kind of required a break in the learning just because 85 minutes is a long time to facilitate the mask breaks, we are down to 50 minute periods. And to travel a group of students outside for a mask break of any length and back is at least a five to 10 minute journey and it really just interrupts the, the classroom time. So it is something where the staff is instructed to be aware of how the students are doing, to ask, to check. And if any student says, I need a mask break, we're going to accommodate that, either with the nurse's office, through guidance, through me, where we'll take them out. Additionally, we have the bridge block intervention time during the day and we look to create opportunities for kids to go outside during that weather, whatever the weather is, to just get some fresh air, which is just a good thing. Pre-COVID, now, what have you.
Okay. I think that some students may, might feel scared to ask the teacher. So I don't know if it would be wise to maybe ask them to, you know, announce it in the beginning or just, you know, just to try to come up with a few more strategies to get them more breaks. Of course.
How long are the, how long is the testing time between classes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes? I'm just thinking to mitigate what if possible, not to change the school day, the timing of the school day, but if it was something as simple as once in the afternoon, taking like a minute off of two classes and adding a few minutes to one of the testing times so that they can have an extra few minutes if they go from, you know, period five, six or seven.
Yeah, we can analyze that, yeah. And I think as a stance, we're not opposed to kids taking mask breaks. It's just finding the, the right time without interrupting the classes that they're excited to be back into. So, but yes, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time on that. Another question I have, what did I say? Okay, so they'll probably be handled the same as rain days for the mask breaks for the younger students. They'll just be in like the gym or something with...
Unless somebody wants to correct that, I mean, weather permitting, we're outside as much as possible. But minus that, we find the largest indoor spaces to take as much a break as possible.
Awesome, thank you. And one, another thing that I actually wanted to ask about the testing kits. Do you know, because I was in a meeting today about them, do we use Biodex?
Bionex.
Yep.
Bionex. Yep.
So in the meeting that I was in today, it said, so Biodex, can you explain to people like what it is a little bit?
Abbott Bionex Now, it's the company's Abbott and the product is Bionex Now. So it's a, it's a swab, a reagent and a holder of the, of the swab. So you would swab someone's nose with a Q-tip that's provided. It's put into a holder, you put drops on it and then you wait 15 minutes to, for the reagent. If there's a, if there's any virus, then it would react.
And it's not the, it's not the swab that goes way back?
It is not a tickle your brain swab.
And that's for the test and stay program, right?
Correct.
So in the meeting that I was in today, it said that there's a lot of boxes that are expired, but we're able to still use them. And that's just not, I'm not saying it's this district, they're just saying like many. Do you know, do we have any expired boxes?
So when they, when, my understanding is when they, what we've heard is when they were originally produced for original testing, they put an expiration date on them. And then since then, they've determined that the expiration date is actually, it's a, it has a much longer shelf life. So they have, they have adjusted the dates by lot number.
And who is "they"?
The company.
The company.
Yep.
And then another thing, when you said that we're not going to be offering virtual learning for any students if they get COVID or have to be quarantined. And so, I was just wondering, because when I was in the meeting, Assistant Commissioner Russell Johnston said that he's encouraging districts to do that?
And, and so, I think what they're trying to do is not close the door on that. But we don't have the capacity to build out with the numbers we have of virtual or remote. And it's, it's not something that, that we, that districts are doing like Abington. None of us are. I don't know which districts are. I'd like to find out who is and how they're doing it. Because it'd be something that if we could do it, we would. It's a good thing to do, no doubt. So, you know, I, I can, I can try to find out who's doing it and how they're pulling it off.
Yeah, I think that would be great, if we could get some information back on that. And, oh, okay, so one other thing that I wanted to ask is the COVID, the Abington School weekly numbers, can we get the numbers like bi-weekly or something like that? Just the school committee so that we know what the numbers are so we can keep up with them? Of just the Abington students or staff as well, but just so that it's not including the whole town of Abington?
So, our plan is to go back to updating that website, that dashboard? And is that, is up, so my, is, if that website, if the dashboard is updated, does that satisfy the question you're asking?
I think it would.
Yeah, our dashboard would include students and staff by school.
Yeah, that's what it was. I would just ask Peter, can you send, you had mentioned that before, I meant to ask you, can you send, because you said you were going to send like weekly? Could you send like just a link to that each week, just saying it's, when people know it's been updated?
Yep. And so, I appreciate that. My, my plan is, I mean, I had a district ask me for all of the correspondence we sent like during COVID. And I noticed that, I mean, I wrote, it's a ridiculous number of emails that went out every single night about this. And so, I, at some point, you stop, I, you know, after the first week, I'm sure people stopped reading them. Many people did. So, my plan is to send out a weekly update on numbers and then do an update of that dashboard. And I could certainly do a link on that weekly update. And it's not, you know, not being lazy about sending out a letter every night, I could do that. I just don't know that it's helpful to people.
Well, to be quite honest, I wouldn't even, I mean, I wouldn't even ask you to put the numbers in the email, just say, here is a link updated with the numbers for the end of, week ending.
I don't think we'll miss the letters, but it would help if we could all at least have the same place that we're looking at the same information, just so that we have comparison and know that we're, it's valid.
Knowing what date it's updated as of, if that's considered, I'd probably usually what, Friday? I mean, Friday would be a date, I'm assuming so.
And having said, I'm, I'm not even the one that, that updates it. It's my friends out there in the audience that do it. So, I feel, I want to make sure I don't take credit for that. So, they're diligent about that, so thank you, Sarah and Rich.
And, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I, just on sort of the same vein, vaccination numbers. You know, if we have an October 1st, you know, for 80%, I think a lot of people would like to know if we're even close to that, are we approaching that, are we tracking that?
Agreed.
Peter, I might be able to answer that. So, Desi is still, from my understanding, is working on a method to figure out your percentage because it's a staff and student. So, I know that the health department can disaggregate by age group, but we would have to dig a little bit deeper. So, we're actually waiting on the Department of Education to provide a template for that.
Great.
There has been question too as to whether or not the preschool program counts within the high school count, if that makes sense, because it is a shared facility. So, do we know that yet?
We don't know that. There's also questions around, is the middle and the high school considered one? Are they considered two? And we're, we're, that is a question that I've posed to the department. And we're waiting on word on that.
So, if we could just get some sort of word whenever you get some sort of word, that would be great, because I do know that's something that people would like to look at as far as that helps us know where our benchmark's going to be.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
And then I just, I just have one last statement. And that is, I just want to say that with the money that we got for, from last year from the state and the feds, that I really think that we should be providing the masks to ensure that they are FDA and NIOCH, OSH, I guess that means National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health-approved masks, if we actually really do want them to work. And I feel that we should also be providing a placeholder for someone's mask, especially if they're at lunch. And if not, then we should be replacing masks more often, like after the bathroom, after snack and lunch. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else have questions or statements?
No, thanks.
Thank you, Peter. And so, now we have a report of the Assistant Superintendent. It's Felicia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have thank yous also, but Peter, Peter was so eloquent in his, I'll only do a couple. But, not on my agenda. I do want to remind everybody that this year, breakfast and lunch is free for all students at all of our buildings. There's an opportunity for students in each building to receive breakfast and free breakfast, and there's also free lunch. So, I just encourage people to avail themselves of that. That's a federally funded program. That's not an Abington or a state, a state program. Let's talk a minute about our buses. So, we sent out over 1,000 bus tags. Since we sent out the bus tags or prepared the bus tags to be sent out last Wednesday, we've had over 100 bus applications. So, I can assure you that the people working in our transportation office or the one person in our transportation office is doing yeoman's work to get students onto buses. It takes a little while. It takes a little while if someone's applying for a waiver of the bus fee for that to be processed. It takes a little while, once we receive the application, to find a bus, to make sure there's an existing stop. If there's not an existing stop, what can we do to not add a lot of time to the route? And then to produce a bus tag. So, we're asking people who have submitted a bus application in, since the middle of August, to please be patient. We're telling people two weeks, we're hoping it's not two weeks. As soon as we process, we send the tag out. And as soon as a student gets the tag, they can ride on the bus. We have also received numerous requests, requests for bus stop changes. We're also asking that we are, provided the opportunity to run our buses for a couple of weeks and make sure that all the students that want to ride on buses are on buses. And then we'll address individual questions about bus stops. I can tell you that the bus drives by hundreds of homes in Abington every day and we just can't stop at every house. That's why we have neighborhood stops. As the grade spans get higher, the distances might be a little further. So, a high school stop, your child might need to walk a little further than they did for a medical, middle school stop, a little further than they did for Beaver Brook stop. So, please be patient with that, but we, we try not to make a lot of bus stop changes after the school year starts. And as Mr. Schaefer mentioned, you can anticipate buses will run late for the first few weeks of school. It's real, it's really hard to get timing down. We have a ton of construction throughout town. We're working with the DPW to make sure our buses can get down roads that are being paved. And in some instances, it's just not possible. If they can allow a bus down, they will. So, that's one. Two is at our, at our Beaver Brook and Woodsdale, they, the drivers are check, making sure each student that gets on the bus has a tag. So, they're getting on the correct bus to go home. That takes a little bit of time before the drivers know who each of the students are. And the time that you received on your, the letter that came home is the time that the route starts. So, if the tag says the, that you should be at the stop at 8:15, that's when the route starts. So, you could be a stop at the beginning of the route or at the end of the route. But you have to be out there for the first couple of weeks when the route first starts, until you know the timing of when the bus will be at your stop. But, please be patient. There, there will be late tomorrow, like Peter said, tomorrow's supposed to be torrential downpours. There's construction, there may be accidents. So, buses will be late in the morning and I'm sure they'll be late in the afternoon. We also share buses between schools, which keeps our costs down. So, the high school shares with the Woodsdale and the middle school shares with Beaver Brook. So, if the middle school buses are running late, then it bumps the Beaver Brook buses even later. Are there any questions on our busing?
I have one, Felicia. You, and it's not, I think it's almost self-explanatory. You mentioned over 100 bus applications have come in. Because you said applications, I'm guessing not many of them or zero are move-ins that are required to be transported?
There are, and yeah, within that, you're right. I should have said 100 new requests.
Okay.
We've had, I don't know the exact number of registrations we've had in the last two weeks. It's been significant. So, new bus requests, whether it's by application or mandate.
Okay.
But good question. Are there other questions? All right. Summer projects typically, and this summer was typical, I'm having a hard time here, can read, can't read. We have numerous summer projects that occur in our school buildings. I'd like to thank Jason, Lynn, and the, and the maintenance team, all of our custodians and our tech department, as, as Peter mentioned especially. This summer, there was routine deep cleaning that happened in all the buildings, cleaning and waxing of all the floors, changing of air filters throughout our systems and throughout all of our buildings, and unpacking and moving furniture that had been packed away last summer to limit the amount of furniture in classrooms was unpacked, reallocated. For, some furniture from classrooms had to be repacked up because new furniture was coming in. So, it was a very busy time for the custodians, not to mention the three summer school programs that happened here at the middle high school, that really took a whole, the whole high school wing of the building out of commission for cleaning until summer school ended. So, I just, I do want to thank the hard work of our full and part-time custodians and our summer help custodians. Additionally, and I need to thank Rich Baikowski and Jason Lynn especially. Two years ago, a town meeting, we had a, a town meeting article for security upgrades at the Beaver Brook and the Woodsdale, and those were completed this summer. So, that can, included asbestos abatement at the Beaver Brook, which allowed us to run cabling to, to doors and cameras. It included interior and exterior cameras in both buildings. It include key fob at the entrances, to the exterior entrances to both buildings. So, that's a huge improvement for us. Questions on summer projects? Building project update. So, as I reported a couple meetings ago, our project is winding down. Of every MS, every project that is funded through the Mass School Building Authority, at the end of the project undergoes a, a project audit by MSBA. And MSBA holds back actually 5% of the money you'd be reimbursed until you complete this internal audit through MSBA. So, we're towards the tail end of that. We've had to provide minimal documents. And again, I need to thank Sarah Ganey in, in my office and Mary Mahoney, who is our original project manager, for helping with that. We are currently on track for our project to be closed out at the October MSBA meeting, which means that at that time, the town will get the additional 5% reimbursement. So, we're, we're very happy about that.
Under budget?
Under budget and early.
And early.
We have two, we had two outstanding items that I've talked about in previous meetings and I just wanted to touch upon those. One was the tennis courts. Next week, New England Tennis will be on site to complete the first of a five-year court maintenance agreement. They'll laser the courts to make sure there's no unevenness in the court and then, in the courts. And then they'll perform crack sealing on some of the cracks that have occurred. And they'll be doing that for the, this is, like I said, the first of five years that they'll be performing that. And my last item is a renovation of the southeast field. That's the first field that you see when you drive in. And if you've been on that field or noticed that field, it never came in to the specifications that we would have liked for a playing field. And grass came in in clumps. So, in the coming weeks, we'll be, we've hired a contractor to scrape the top layer of grass off. They're adding horticulture loom and hydro seeding. And we anticipate by this time next year, so fall of 2022, we'll have a playable playing field.
And that is not coming out of our monies, it's coming out of what was already paid there, just rectifying.
It's coming out of the building project.
Thank you, Felicia. Does anyone have any questions?
Wendy, I don't, but I forgot something earlier, if you don't mind. So, I just, a couple of years ago, I came to Peter and asked about the class assignments, how they were always mailed out, postcards, everybody got them different times. So, I mentioned the idea of putting it online. I think COVID may have sped up the process, but I just want to thank you, and I'm smart enough to know Rich, for getting that done for all grades. I think it's great that everybody can get it essentially at the same time, save on mailing things all over who gets what, when something gets lost in the mail. So, I just wanted to recognize and thank you guys for getting that accomplished. Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you. Okay, so we have some informational items in our packets. And one of them has to do with the MASC joint conference. And I don't know if anyone's interested in going to it. I used to go to it with Kathy when she was on the committee. But then I got a different job and she's not on the committee anymore. So, I don't know if anybody would like to sign up. It is through the district, so the district pays for it. I don't think they pay for an overnight, but, right? Tell us all about it.
Yeah, no, it's a reasonable reimbursement for people because the conference runs all day and into the next day. So, you know, reasonable expenses are reimbursed.
Right. And you don't have to go to all, you could go to one day or you could go to just the Saturday. There's usually one there. I don't know if you guys, there's a, a school committee, like tests or something that you have to take? Like there's so many hours that you need to be able to be on school committee. So, there's this, if you haven't done that course yet, you can do it here. So, it's a great idea.
I think they call it charting, I think you did it, charting the course?
Charting the course.
We did it.
It's a good time, right?
We charted that course.
All eight hours of it.
In one day.
There's usually a theme they do every, every year. There's a different theme and there's a lot of vendors that go and, you know, different people that you can talk to and socialize with and it's a good, no, networking, you know, group. So, if anyone's interested, just in the past, we just let Teresa know, or you could let Peter know.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you. So, we also have the 2021, 2022 school committee meeting dates. The subcommittee structure is in here, grant allocations. And then also a position statement on critical race theory. This is from the state, this position. And so, that is in our packets and it will also, it's also posted online, if anyone would like to see it. The dates to remember, we have September 6th, which is this Monday, is Labor Day. So, all school offices and buildings will be closed. Tuesday, September 7th, the AA, AEP and kindergarten begin. Wednesday, September 8th, Green Wave Boosters meeting at 7:00 PM at the cafeteria of the high school. Sunday, September 19th is the Jeff Coombs Memorial Road Race. And that starts at Woodsdale School at 9:00 AM. I'm sure she's always looking for volunteers, if anybody would like to volunteer. Sunday, September 19th, Music Parents Craft Fair, which will be at the middle high school. Is that the auditorium or?
Does anyone know?
It's generally in the kind of cafeteria and the hallways.
Thank you.
And then Wednesday, September 22nd is the CPAC meeting at the Abington Middle High School Library at 6:30. School Library at 6:30. And Thursday, September 23rd, is an in-service early release day for students.
Can I add one quick thing?
Go ahead.
So something else that our building principals have been working on with, with the faculties is, I think, we all know that this is the 20th memorial anniversary of the events of 9/11. We just lost 13 service people last week. We just ended the longest war in American history. This community, through Christie and, you know, remembering Jeff Coombs is intimately tied to that, and the loss of our own service people here with Danny Vesalian in the war. And so we're intimately connected to that, and principals are going to be publishing to families just, just how we're going to handle that remembrance, that discussion at buildings. And it's going to be age-appropriate, depending on the, the grade level, just so that, just that people know what we're doing, and that people know that we're going to be honoring, remembering, and educating because of everything I just, I mentioned, so.
Thank you, Peter. Does anybody else have anything to add or any questions?
I just wanted to verbally put in my plug, I had put it out before in print, but for the race, it is the last one, and I know some people shy away from things that say "race," thinking that you have to run. There are so many people who walk, and my own kids, if they're feeling especially lazy that day, just kind of hang out in the back, there's so much going on. Peter has said we have a special community, the kids are great, I have said that so many times. And for me, this was one of the first events that really made me feel part of this Abington community, and I just wanted to put in a plug, in case you are on the fence, just to come out for the last one, so that you get to experience how special that day is.
It really is extraordinary. Thank you. All right. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to, oh, I just want to tell you just one other thing, the next school committee meeting is Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. And would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Awesome. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming, everyone. Thank you for Abington Cam, for being here and recording us again. Have a good night.